Hey folks, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Campbell, let the record reflect that all the trustees are here, and do you have any correspondence?
Yes, sir, I do have three.
What do you got?
First one is a letter from American Legion Post 318, addressing Mr. Wright. This is a contribution acknowledgement. Please accept Anderson American Legion Post 318 sincere appreciation and acknowledgement for your assistance with the flag retirement process. Assistance such as yours help our post to continue moving forward with our programs benefiting military service personnel in the Anderson Township and other community. Sincerely yours and God and country, Bob Carey, Anderson American Legion Post 318. Next two are liquor permits. The first one is, this is a new permit for Dolegin Midwest LLC. They're doing business as Pop Shelf Store 30020 at 450 State Route 125, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio 45245. It is appropriately zoned and there are no objections from the police department. Our last one is another liquor permit. This is a transfer. It's transferring from Don Manning Stores LLC, doing business as the BP Unimart 217 at 543 Ohio Pike, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio 45255. That's transferring ownership to Nency, N-E-N-C-Y LLC at the same address. Again, Mr. McCormick says they are in the correct zoning and the police department has no objections, and that concludes the correspondence.
Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, so before I go any further, I want to remind people, if you have any public comment for public comment period, these cards are in the back room, please fill one out and bring it up here. And then we are going to go to years of service recognition awards. We got two people here this evening for those. Jason Jackson from the police department, 10 years, come on up, Jason. Well, Jason, thank you for your years of service to Union Township. Any memorable events or anything you'd like to tell us?
Just a bit of privilege, sir, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Logan?
Hey, thank you for coming up here tonight. It's always great to see people that are all on the team here in Union Township and celebrating the anniversary, 10, 10 years for you with, with the department. So just my heartfelt thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, 10 years, appreciate you very much. Yeah, thank you for being here, appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Okay, don't go too far away, so we're going to bring up another person for the, for a service award, and we're going to have two hires, and then we're going to do photos with the four of you. All right, so the next person, Charles Cadell, 25 years, the fire department, Charles, come on up.
Charles.
Tell you already a popular guy.
Yeah. Oh, they ruin.
He's got 25 years, I know you've got stories to tell, anything you want to say publicly.
Well, it's the fire service, a lot of them's not appropriate.
Okay. All right, well certainly, thank you for your, your time here with, with Union Township.
Well, thank you, and I, it's, it's been a great 25 years, I appreciate it.
Ah, good to hear. Mr. Logan?
Charles, I, I appreciate your 25 years of service, I appreciate what you do for all the residents in the community. I myself appreciate the services you've provided to either myself or my family at different points of times. So you're maybe one of the many, but no, it's a good thing. So we are just awesome to have you here with us for 25 years, I really appreciate that. So keep, keep it up and appreciate, hopefully you can stay with us for as long as you continue to push that or stretch that, so.
I'd say 25 more, I don't think it's going to happen, I'm 56, so.
You look pretty young to me still, so, thank you.
Mr. Dills?
Charles, appreciate you, sir, 25 years. They don't make them like you anymore, so.
Old war wagons.
It's not a fun half of the.
I, I heard all the hooting and hollering when you came up here, so I love it, I love it, so appreciate you, sir, very much. You could have chose any fire department, probably switched and made a move, and I appreciate you sticking it out with us, and seriously, I thank you very much, appreciate you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Charles, my pleasure, absolutely, yeah.
Great, yeah, so thanks for coming up, and again, don't go too far away, we're going to get photos with, with the four again in a few minutes here.
All right, thank you.
Okay, which takes us into personnel actions. And Chief Clements, who do you have from the fire department? Elizabeth Highland, is she here?
She is here.
Elizabeth, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Tell us about her.
Tonight I'd like to introduce and recommend Ms. Elizabeth Highland for consideration for the position of full-time firefighter paramedic. Ms. Highland grew up in the Milford Loveland area, she obtained her firefighter one and two from Warren County Career Center, and her paramedic certification in 2022 from Sinclair Community College. Ms. Highland has gained experience most recently working for Goshen Township Fire Department. Liz has successfully completed all aspects of the hiring process, including a background, polygraph, and psychological evaluation, and I'll add that she was exceptionally professional throughout the process. Ms. Highland has shown extreme excitement about joining our team, and I hope for that opportunity for her. I would highly recommend a conditional offer of employment to Ms. Highland as a full-time firefighter paramedic at a rate of pay consistent with step one of the collective bargaining agreement effective September 16th, 2024 at 7:00 AM pending successful completion of a physical examination.
Okay, sounds good. So, why, do you prefer Elizabeth, Beth, Liz, what do you go by?
Most people call me Liz.
Liz, okay. Well, really appreciate you coming to Union Township, what was it, what was it like in Goshen?
What's that?
What was it like in Goshen Township?
Um, well, I didn't hear what it said. Lots of, it was probably my first fire of home, so lots of growth, lots of training opportunities, obviously we went through a tornado, so a lot of bonding as a crew and a family, so those memories are something I'm going to hold dear.
Okay, so Goshen trained you, and then we stole you away, so remind me to send them a thank you note. Their loss, our gain, awesome. All right, Mr. Logan?
So I just, I have this fond memory, I hear Warren County Career Center, right? That's where you graduated from?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, I know great things about the program, so I smile because I reflect on little, little, young me, I don't even want to put an age to it, but do you know the huge culvert maybe that's like by 122 right there? I used to play in that as a kid, I don't know why, but I mean, I used to go outside and play, that was probably the early 90s, and yeah, so anyway, fond memories of that area, but we are so, you know, thankful to have, have you joining the team here, and you know, from a number of the runs that you'll go on here in the township, could be all populations all the way down to little kids playing in culverts along the street, hopefully not, hopefully not, but, but we're thankful to have you, so it's just awesome, looking forward to a great career for you, thank you.
I'm thankful for the opportunity.
Liz, you got your family here?
I do.
Yeah, introduce them, please, yeah.
Uh, this is my mom, stand up, this is, this is Allison Highland, this is my mom, my rock.
Yeah.
My brother, Trey, Trey, stand up, it's Trey Highland, and then if anyone who came with me can stand up, I just want to say this is my extended family, I'm going to cry.
Wow, awesome.
Wow.
Everybody who I'm fortunate enough to get to.
Oh my god.
Are they all ready to move to the township?
I'd love that. They are, they've been a blessing, so, I'm crying, sorry, thank you.
So as soon as we vote on you, the half the audience is going to clear out, right?
I think it depends how we vote.
Liz, that's incredible, the, look at, that's a great support system, I love that, beautiful, that's awesome.
They all taught me something, so, I wanted to bring that with me, sorry, I can't.
No, I love it, this is your moment, I love it, and I'll just tell you, first off, do you play basketball?
I did as a very little child, I haven't a while, but then we picked it back up on shift, so I'm still not great, but they say that I do get a couple of good shots in, so I do my best.
Good, 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 hear that, chief?
Yeah.
Crying out loud, you know, okay, so good.
It gets pretty competitive.
It is, our police and fire, yeah, well, our firefighters are back here, and you know, they can all take me, so I gotta be careful what I say, so, no, I'm just kidding, the, I'll tell you what, good people, good people, love them to death, and I love what you said about the camaraderie, and you know, you had a horrible tragedy in, in Goshen with the tornado, but a good camaraderie with these guys, good people, and you'll get real close with them, and you see, you know, like, you know, Lieutenant Cadell, 25 years, and Lord willing, they all stay here, they love it here, and so we're glad to have you, I'm very blessed, so, yeah, thanks, thanks, Liz, appreciate you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, very good, so, looks like we need a motion to hire Elizabeth Highland for the position of firefighter paramedic step one in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement with an effective date of September 16th, 2024 at 7:00 AM pending successful completion of a medical, physical examination. Do you have a motion, Mr. Logan?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
No discussion, roll call please, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Liz.
Of course, they said don't knock over the plant, and I laughed.
It's all right, I'm used to getting checked around.
I think that's a sign, John, you're done tonight.
I'm going to be the first sign of the gun.
All right, Liz, don't go far, we're going to bring you back up in a few minutes for a, for a photo, but until then, John Tyma, are you in the room? Come on up, and Chief Reese, tell us about Mr. Tyma.
Thank you, Mr. Becker, tonight I would like to present John Tyma to the board for the position of police officer for Union Township. Mr. Tyma is a resident of Claremont County and a 2020 graduate of the Ohio State Patrol Academy, where he received his OPADA Police Officer Certification. Mr. Tyma holds a bachelor's degree in business management from American Military University, and served a total of 20 years before retiring from the United States Army. Mr. Tyma comes to Union Township from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, where he has served as a park officer for four years. Mr. Tyma successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the position of police officer, including background, polygraph, and psychological examination. I am requesting the board appoint John Tyma to the position of police officer in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement and pending successful completion of a physical examination. Mr. Tyma's start date is scheduled for September 4th, 2024.
Sounds good. Well, Mr. Tyma, you sound like you're well qualified for the position, any, any comments you have for the board?
No, sir, thank you for taking the time to allow me to present myself tonight.
All right, thank you for, for applying and getting through the rigorous process, I hear it's pretty intense.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Logan, anything?
I heard 20 years in the army, so thank you for your service to our country.
Thank you, sir.
Looking forward to your service here for Union Township, so thank you for that, and was it Ohio State Highway Patrol as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, how many years was that?
Well, no, just the Patrol Academy.
Just the Patrol Academy, okay, thank you, and then, and then over to ODNR?
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome. I think what I see and hear out of that's very well-rounded experiences throughout law enforcement and, and in the profession of arms, so we're, we're looking forward to having you, so look forward to seeing you around, sir.
We got two military guys up here, to my right and my left, Mr. Dills, Mr. Air Force, go ahead.
John, yeah, appreciate you being here, is this your wife?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, please introduce her, yeah.
Yes, my wife, Chelsa, we've been married in October 2019, and we have three children together.
Love it, love it. And Claremont County resident?
Yes, that's right.
20 years army, and love it, appreciate you very much, yeah, we're excited to have you onboard. You'll, you'll notice UT Police Department's bad at the bone, good guys, and you'll, you'll love it here, so you'll definitely be a lifer, hopefully, so appreciate you, John, very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Yeah, something y'all recognize being in the army is Fort Liberty, used to be Fort Bragg, my son-in-law is a captain there, so he went through ROTC, and he's been there a few months now. Really liked him, making, he's got career, career army, he's loving it.
Yes, sir.
So maybe you'll have some suggestions or advice for him, I can pass it on if you like.
You have to talk to him, sir.
All right, so we are going to need a motion, Mr. Logan, have a motion to hire John Tyma for the position of police officer at the 12-month service rate as established within the collective bargaining agreement with an effective date of September 4th, 2024 pending successful completion of a medical, physical examination.
So moved.
Wait a second, all right, any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Campbell, roll call please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I just, John.
Congratulations, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Absolutely. Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to do photos now, so I need John, Liz, who else do we have? Charles, Jason, come on up, yes, that's fine. All right, I guess we're ready to continue the meeting. Okay, folks, public comment, so far I have one card. Is there anybody else that wishes a public comment, you think of anything, fill out a card back through and bring it up. Meantime, Mel, come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Mel DeWitt, 3902 Banks Road, Union Township, Ohio.
Very good, you have the floor, sir, go ahead.
Okay, I know that Chief Reese is probably going to be reporting on this, but Police Night Out, I think, was a very good success due to Sergeant Seabird and a bunch of other people, too many to list properly. Service Department, all of the people that attended and brought their tents and so forth, bouncy houses, made it a very good event, and this was number 17, I believe, is that correct? Number 17 or 18, whatever, very good, and so for whoever the people were that instigated the very first one, thank you. And my words are from myself personally, but I believe that they would be echoed by the members of our Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association as well. It is a lot of work for everybody concerned, and I thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your words, Mr. DeWitt, that your feelings are shared by all of us, we thought it was a great event as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, anybody else for public comment? Last call. Hearing none, we will move on to department reports. Chief Clements, what do you got?
Thank you, Mr. Becker, in the month of July, the fire department responded to 175 fire and service calls, 534 emergency medical responses, 494 patient contacts, and we transported 391 patients to local hospitals. The fire department completed 1,929 hours of training, were involved in 20 public education details, hosted 18 hours of EMT medic ride-along time, completed 99 life safety inspections and five inspections with the building department. I'd also like to announce and pleased to announce that on August 6th, 2024, the Union Township Fire Department was awarded international reaccreditation status with the Commission on Fire Accreditation International for meeting the criteria established through the CFAI's voluntary self-assessment and accreditation program. We are one of more than 300 agencies to achieve internationally accredited agency status with the CFAI. This is a very grueling and time-consuming process, and I just wanted to take time to thank the men and women of the fire department, as well as those in the township for their efforts in achieving this for the fifth time in our department's history. On behalf of the fire department, I am honored to present this plaque here to the board of trustees and to the township administrator, Mr. Wright, to proudly host here at the Civic Center for all to see, so.
Awesome.
This is, this is for the Civic Center and everybody's efforts in this, so this is for you.
Great, thanks, chief.
Thank you, absolutely.
Yeah, hey, that, that's awesome, getting that accreditation and certainly a reaccreditation, I should say, certainly a feather in the cap of the, of the whole fire department, a great team that you have there, and I know you inherited a lot of good people and you're continuing to grow the department, and we love the great work that you're doing, thank you.
I appreciate it, thanks, sir.
Mr. Logan, anything?
Thank you for sharing that background and showing off the plaque that you brought here for, for everyone in the community, the Civic Center, but yeah, I'm thrilled at the reaccreditation, you guys have just not missed a beat, and that's a testament of, of your leadership, you and the whole team together, so I would not have had any other expectation than successful outcome, but you know, it's just, it's always great to see those challenges behind you, so. Quick question, saw an annotation here on the report this month for hospital transports, one being identified by law enforcement pickup, can you explain a little bit about the process of that sometimes where it's, you're either processing or law enforcement's picking or taking?
Yeah, so depending on the type of call, a lot of, a lot of times, both the fire department as well as the police department will, will respond, and we have a great working relationship with the police department. When, when both units arrive on scene, if it's a medical emergency, ultimately the fire department will, the paramedics will transport to the hospital. If it's deemed that there's no medical emergency but the patient still needs possibly mental evaluation type event, that's when the law enforcement would generally take over and transport.
Okay, okay, I'm surprised that there's not a higher frequency, or are we breaking, are we starting to break this out like that?
I think this is, this is a new breakdown.
Okay, I think that's, that's likely good to recognize or see, just because I know that those type of calls can be taxing or resource, you don't know what you don't know, so just have an idea where it's going, it's probably beneficial.
Sure.
Anyway, thanks for breaking that down.
Absolutely.
With the additional hire of Liz tonight, does that take two vacancies down to one vacancy, or how's that looking?
Yep, we're down to, we'll be down to one vacancy, have two very qualified candidates that were in the background process right now, so we'll have a, hopefully, zero after next month.
Okay, and to what extent can you share as far as shift coverage with other human capital kind of resource constraints with injuries and not being full-time status?
Yeah, we, we currently have two members that are, that are out on an extended period of time with some significant injuries. We, we're doing a really good job of filling those shifts without creating overtime, and we're hopefully get those back to where, you know, the overtime cost that we're, that we have now is going to be pretty minimal, so.
Yeah.
People are stepping up and filling up shifts, so if that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, and it's based off of, is there anything that you need additional resources to help support the fire department in that, in that effort, so that's kind of my question there, because I recognize that that's more unique.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're at a good spot right now with what we have, we're hitting the ground running, we're not missing any calls, so the service is not diminished a little bit.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Dills?
Yeah, chief, congratulations on the accreditation, I know that's a very big deal, and I don't want that to be undervalued, so appreciate you very much, appreciate your team very much, well done. I know Police Night Out is the word police night out, however, I know there's a, you allow quite a few presence of your firefighters to be there, quite a few handful of fire trucks and ambulances there, and so just appreciate you being there and staffing that, I know you were there as well. and, uh, ambulance is there, and so just appreciate you being there and staffing that. I know you were there as well, present, so, just, just well done with that as well. Appreciate it. And then that was my question as well, staffing and where we're at, so appreciate addressing that, so that's all I got. So, thank you, Chief.
Absolutely.
Yeah, one more thought, unless anybody's got any objections or some better ideas, because, um, but after this meeting, between this meeting and CIC meeting, get a photo of that plaque with the whole team up here.
Sure.
Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah, I was looking out there earlier if Lisa was just with the crowd or if she was still sitting out here, so. Nonetheless, there's a lot of photos we can do.
He's got it.
I'll take care of it.
He's got it.
Correal text.
We want you in it.
Okay, uh, Chief Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the month of July, uh, the Communication Center handled four thousand eight hundred fifty-two calls for service for police, fire and EMS, and forty thousand nine hundred and seventy-five total calls. Our Record Section processed five hundred and two juvenile and adult court-related documents and delivered one hundred court notices requiring an officer's personal appearance in court. They also processed four Rule Sixteens for the Prosecutor's Office, handled one hundred and seventy-one's record requests, and handled fourteen video, body camera video redactions. In the area of Public Affairs, officers conducted multiple public relations events during the month of July that included several Fourth of July parades in the Polo Field Subdivision and in the Shaler Crossing Subdivision. Officers also conducted a active shooter response training for employees of a local business in the seven hundred block of Old Seventy-four. Uh, and just to echo the Board's comments about the Police Night Out, um, it was a tremendous success. It gets bigger every year, uh, and we certainly couldn't put it on without our partners. It really is a township-wide event, the Fire Department, Service Department, all our Citizen Police Academy volunteers. The weather was great. It was just, uh, really a wonderful night out for the community. Uh, in the area of Operations, the Patrol Division took three hundred and twenty-five incident reports, seventy-six crash reports, five hundred and nine, conducted five hundred and ninety-eight traffic stops, issued one hundred and forty-nine citations, and four hundred and fifty-seven written warnings. Officers also made eighty-five criminal arrests, ninety traffic arrests, and served seventy-two warrants. In the area of Training, uh, officers attended a total of a hundred and twenty-eight hours of training in the month of July, and that includes, that concludes my report. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, again, the, uh, Police Night Out, I mean, we just can't say enough about how, how well that's been going from, uh, from year to year in the, this year also. And, yeah, so congratulations to you and your people for making that happen, and as you pointed out, you know, it wasn't just the police. It was, it was all hands on deck, all departments, and, you know, and there's a lot of credit to, uh, to spread around for all of that. Thank you. Mr. Logan, anything?
Can always say great things about Police Night Out by all, from Fire and Service Department and obviously Police and our Assistant Alumni, um, and all the vendors. So, it's, uh, just honored to be, be a part of it again and, and have the opportunity to be there, uh, this year to kick it off with you. So, thank you. Um, active shooter response training, I think that that's just great, uh, let alone for the residents and, and, you know, businesses within the community, but also for our own force, uh, because it gets you in that perspective of thinking of, again, if you can teach something, then you know that subject better, and it gets you thinking through the different processes that have to take place. So, that's always good. Uh, and when the bullets start flying, um, it's, you know, sometimes people, it's a misnomer to say you rise to the occasion. When the bullets start flying, you fall to the level of your training, and, and the training's very key and important and critical. So, I'm just happy to see that happening. So, great work, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Yeah, just echo Police Night Out. Well done. Uh, I apologize. You were my very first phone call, uh, the next day, because I couldn't be there. Being in the, I was gone for the Air Force, so I appreciate that. Sorry I missed it. Uh, who, I didn't get word, who took the dog attack? Any of you two volunteer this year?
That wasn't mine.
That's a shame. That's too bad. Anyway, so, uh, appreciate you, Chief, very much. Well done, and, uh, also, your Citizens Police Academy, I believe, just started recently, correct?
Yes.
A new one started. Love that. A pretty packed class, right?
Twenty-four people.
Twenty-four people. Awesome. Awesome. That's, is it every Thursday?
Every Tuesday. They're actually downstairs right now.
Right now, okay. Every Tuesday for how long?
Uh, until roughly the third week of October.
Okay, so just a couple months. Yeah, perfect. That's great. And then, uh, obviously, school's starting back, and, uh, just want to let you know, just passing along our sentiments that as far as school safety, I know we have our, our resource officers there, we have our dogs on patrol there. Whatever you need, we want to make sure our, our schools are safe, so appreciate you allocating the staff to do that and make sure the students are safe. So, whatever you need, everything good, comfortable so far?
Yes, sir.
Great. Good. So, thank you, Chief, very much.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Mr. McCormick, give us your report.
Thank you. For the month of July, we had thirty-seven inspections, eighteen complaints, three unfounded complaints, eight warning citations, four, four letters of, uh, fifteen-day non-compliance letters. Uh, we have eleven resolved cases, three hundred and sixty-two illegal signs removed, um, seven violations for monthly total, nineteen reinspection of violations, and three nuisances filed. For permit activity, we had four commercial permits, seven changes of use, seventeen signs, uh, one temporary sign, eight single-family homes, eight additions, four accessory permits, sixteen permits related to pools and fences, sixty-five permits for the month, and a revenue of eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. And the Fire Department revenue was, uh, related revenue for permits was one thousand and sixty-six dollars. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Great. Thank you, sir. Mr. Logan, anything?
Well, I appreciate the report, Mr. McCormick. Thank you for, uh, the great work. Keep it up.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Cork, well done. Appreciate you.
All right, let's move on. Mr. Wright, what do you got for us?
You forgot that guy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Taylor. How did I, uh, I did skip you. My apologies.
No big deal, sir.
Don't take it personally.
No, not at all. I was okay.
He was actually kind of happy. He had a smile.
Was not intentional.
No, it's no idea.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the Cemetery Division, from July first through the thirty-first, twenty-two burials were performed, generating thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Eight resident graves were purchased, uh, for fifty-six hundred, and five columbarium niches were purchased, generating ninety-two hundred dollars, and one cremation scattering garden arrangement was, uh, purchased for, uh, six hundred dollars. The total amount generated for the period was thirty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. In the Roads Division, a total of one hundred and three potholes were repaired over a total of, uh, thirteen streets, and, uh, work continues on the twenty-twenty-four road resurfacing program, uh, for the township. It is projected, uh, they should be done by the end of the month. Uh, they have one road left. And road right-of-way, uh, continues, uh, mowing and trimming on various township roads. And in the Parks Division, uh, obviously, like everyone else, the Service Department helped out with Police Night Out at Veterans Park, and I agree with the other two chiefs, it was a great event. And improvements were made on, at all, uh, park restroom facilities. Uh, there were flooring improvements made, uh, to help feel a little more sanitary. And that concludes my report.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Logan, anything?
Uh, thank you for the great work, Mr. Taylor. Um, you know, again, yeah, these big community-wide events that we have, if it's, you know, anything from Police Night Out to Concert Series, Farmer's Market, uh, your, you know, the pickleball tournament. I mean, you guys are, your team is busy and really, um, putting a lot into the community, so really appreciate that. Happy to, to get the resources too that you always need, uh, and I think that this project back behind the Civic Center here is just incredibly, uh, just frankly, just looking better and better every time I see it. I know it's just a project you'll be working on, but wow, what a, what a great, um, piece of value to unlock just by putting some labor and capital towards it, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that trail back there looks great. Yeah, clearing out all that underbrush and stuff. Yeah, awesome work with that. Mr. Mills?
Thank you. I thought you were going to forget about me.
I never know.
Yeah, I was told I would pass this along, but if you know anyone ever ODOT to hurry up on that overpass bridge on Glen Estee-Withamville, I said my service director would be more than happy to pass that along, so. I think about fifty thousand other people would chant that as well. Um, yeah, the pickleball tournament, uh, is frustrating. I really wanted to go to that, and, uh, so, but appreciate your, uh, your crews, uh, the cleanup and, and all of that with that, so appreciate you. And, uh, Police Night Out, how many, how many years of corn did your, your guys deliver?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred years of corn.
Yeah.
Wow.
God, Lee, I couldn't imagine doing that.
None left.
There's none left. And I just, please pass it along. We appreciate them very much. And then, you know, we, we, we don't see the behind-the-scenes work. All, all the put-up, all the tear-down, uh, all the cleanup afterwards, uh, that is your Service Department, and so just please pass our sentiments along. We truly appreciate them and, uh, are grateful for, for the team. Appreciate it very much, so, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Taylor.
All right. Unless I've skipped somebody else, uh, how about Mr. Wright?
You don't want to skip me this evening?
Uh, no, not at all.
No. Uh, thank you, Mr. Becker. Um, I have, um, just a few items. Actually, I have a lot of items, but I'll be brief. So, the Klepper Park Improvement Dedication Ceremony was a huge success. Successfully executed that in July, right after, you know, right after our last meeting or whatever. Uh, Service Department did a great job. Police Department did a great job with that. Pleased to announce that we got the improved nets back up just in time. Uh, more than twelve hundred zip ties. Was it twelve hundred zip ties? So, that was, they were all hands on deck doing that, but we have, uh, vent windows and some, uh, improvements. You can have some visibility into that and still achieve the windbreak there. Um, on a related note, they've started, uh, work on the basketball courts over at Klepper to sort of resurface those, and then, uh, the pickleball courts at Veterans will be next up in that. So, we're continuing reinvesting in our existing, uh, physical plan, so. Uh, working on the capital grant splash pad, we have identified that there's some significant water infrastructure. Fortunately, the county has a project that they need advanced, um, and we have the capability or at least a willingness to partner on that to get a loop water main to serve some adjacent neighborhoods to the parks, so we'll be, uh, working on that with the county, working on an MOU to bring to the Board, and, uh, we'll continue those negotiations. Can't say enough about the Fire Department re-accreditation process from the chief, from the chief, assistant chiefs, to the staff members. One of my first challenges to, you know, the new chief was the expectation that there will be no if, it will be when we get re-accredited. Uh, I can't speak enough about the accreditation process, uh, because, you know, we can tell everybody that we're the best, but it really, when you put yourself out there and you measure up to those objectives, that's, I mean, that's as good as it gets. That's verification. And, you know, not only did they deliver, uh, they delivered, you know, in an exceptional way, and, uh, I think that the accreditation team had the opportunity to meet with them, and they were thoroughly impressed with our operation. So, on a similar note, uh, I know that the Police Department is working through their KLEO assessment process now. Had the opportunity to meet with the assessors, um, you know, uh, last week, and I believe that, uh, you know, that process is going well.
Right, Chief?
Yes, sir. And, uh, you know, once we get, uh, confirmed on that, and, and we'll bring that to the Board. Uh, so, uh, that's, again, compliments to the Police Department for outstanding work.
What is this, your fourth or how many accreditations?
Since nineteen ninety-four, I believe.
Several.
Yes, several. So, uh, by all measures, great work. Uh, the summer Concert Series, by all measures, I'd say it was an outstanding success. Uh, attendance was great. We had lots of people here. People were engaged, stuck around. Can't thank Lisa R. enough for her work and time that she put in to, uh, make this a successful event and to sort of rejuvenate that. And, uh, I would also be remiss if I did not thank Tiffany Britnell, who also helps, uh, with various projects in the office. She's, works in our zoning office, but she helps out all hands on deck, and the Police Department and the Service Department for their work at the events as well to make those events successful, uh, enjoyable, and without incident. Uh, the Farmer's Market, uh, is winding down for the summer. Again, outlook, uh, it was a great success, uh, reconfiguring it. I think there was, um, you know, a little bit of a learning curve with that, but it seems like everybody enjoys having that, more of that pedestrian environment, and it was generally well-received. So, we'll start working on that for next year. We are, on a related note, looking at some pedestrian improvements to the site. Uh, Mr. Taylor is working on that to sort of enhance that, knowing that we're going to continue to host the event in a similar configuration in the years to come. Uh, tonight, you have an intergovernmental agreement before you this evening to partner with the TID for engineering related to the Bach-Buxton-Shaler-Clof sidewalk project. If you remember, I mentioned that at the last meeting. That's, uh, a nearly two million dollar pedestrian enhancement and linkage project. I think it's one point seven, one point eight million. Um, we have to do the engineering for that, and that is funded through OKI, about a fifty-fifty match on that. We are partnering with the county because they have some good improvements that they're doing in the same area. Just makes sense to do all the engineering so we don't have to rip it up and replace it twice. So, that'll be before the Board this evening and a corresponding purchase order. Katie Holden has commenced construction on the Champion's Way Road Water and Stormwater Project. I talked to them today, and they are about ready to make the ninety-degree dogleg from the river back to where the cul-de-sac will end. So, they are making great project, progress on the storm. It's a lot of storm, uh, because of the outlet on that, but, uh, that is, uh, by all accounts, going successfully. Uh, on the Champion's Way Sewer, we've secured all the easements. Um, we, uh, will be advancing a purchase order this evening to fund the UTCIC to construct that infrastructure. There'll be a CIC meeting following the Board meeting this evening, and I'm pleased to note that, uh, the, uh, low estimate came in less than the engineer's estimate, so again, we're achieving cost savings on that, and, uh, they believe that can be done fairly quickly. Uh, the end-of-summer fireworks planning continues. Uh, I mentioned the pickleball courts and the basketball courts. We're still waiting to hear back from the state on our DORA. We're sort of at the mercy of their process in that, but we do have the signs posted, so we're ready to go. Just waiting to get the thumbs up from the state. We are working with the County Engineers' Office on the drainage improvements on Elmont Drive, trying to position that project in concert with some improvements on Old Seventy-four to secure some OPWC funding and, hopefully, for next year. That process works better if you have two agencies participating. They like to fund joint projects, so we'll try to position that project so that we can secure grant funding in that regard. Uh, road resurfacing work continues. Um, we are nearly done with that, and we are working to finalize the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven paving lists so that we can have a rotating three-year list of paving requirements so that, you know, to increase our transparency and communicate, you know, that to our residents. So, Matt's doing a good job with that. Just a note for our residents in, um, I was having twenty-twenty-six, it's actually in twenty-twenty-five. At the end of this year, twenty-twenty-five, the county's undertaking water main replacement in the areas off of Rumke. So, you'll see that happen either late this year or early next year. We expect that to probably go nearly a full construction season with all of that. Uh, it's just water main replacement, so then we will time our repaving efforts to coincide with the completion of that project the following year. You want the trenches to settle over the winter. You want that freeze thaw, so, uh, we don't have to go back and fix things. As far as, oh, uh, I, I just heard from Lisa today. We actually were able to find some suitable bulletin boards for the park restrooms.
Nice.
Those corkboards or whatever with the outdoor, and we, we purchased those, and, uh, I think, are we getting those from Global Industrial? So, uh, we'll, as soon as they come in, we'll get them installed. Matt's crew will get them installed. And then just another item, um, for the Board, and I didn't put this in my report. So, there was some recent legislation passed by the state that now requires AEDs in all schools and, uh, communities with athletic facilities. So, in response to that legislation, uh, talked to Chief Clements, Mr. Taylor, and Lieutenant Blankenship in the PD, and we're working collectively to secure, um, boxes, uh, outdoor AED boxes. We'll secure cameras and electric for those to meet that requirement, um, at the facilities where we have athletic fields. So, you'll see them predominantly at Klepper, Veterans, uh, it's what, two, two different locations at Klepper, one at Veterans, and then one at Ivy, is it Ivy Point? Is that where we have Forto?
Correct.
Yep. Because of the walking path at Ivy Point. So, those AEDs will be installed as soon as we get the boxes in, and we can get the, the mounts hardwired and cameras and all that. So, that's, again, state mandate, not funded, but we have to do it, so.
I was just going to ask you that. That's another unfunded mandate.
Unfunded mandate, but we are, we, you know, we live to serve, so that's, that's what we're doing. So, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Logan, anything?
Hey, thanks for the quick follow-up on the community bulletin boards. Um, that's, that's great to hear, uh, to be able to get that out there, uh, in the parks. You covered a lot of information. I mean, it's clear to see, uh, you're churning and burning and getting a lot of great things done. You just look at the trajectory of, of the projects in the township, so thank you for that, uh, time and attention to details there. Uh, park improvements have been extremely well-received. We've got several park board members here tonight, and, um, that's just, it's just awesome to have that community involvement and have, have the community telling us what they're interested in. Uh, so, thanks to the volunteers that are also here and attends tonight. Uh, the AEDs, um, I was aware of the requirement Uh, the AEDs, um, I was aware of the requirement for the schools. I was not necessarily, uh, keying in on the fact that that drives a requirement for us at the parks. Um, I know that our, our state rep, Adam Byrd, just a little south of us, uh, I believe was the sponsor, author of the school portion of the bill, maybe the entire bill. Uh, so, he'll be a great one for us to also, uh, check with on funding, uh, and additional funding since, uh, it is a nice success of his to help make that requirement happen, but at the same rate, uh, the type of funding that that now drives for us at locations like the parks. Uh, but, at the same rate, uh, incredible resource for the community to have and be out there. Uh, so, I'm sure, uh, Chief Clements and Reese, you guys are both probably already thinking on long ahead of this as far as how do we do education and, and get some resources out to the community. Uh, if we're going to have those resources there, we want people to be able to, uh, access them in the event that there's a terrible tragedy happening. Uh, and I'm sure that Lisa's going to be on top of that as well, too. So, just look forward, uh, to, uh, how you guys continue to churn and burn and do great things here in Union Township. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hills?
Hey, Mr. Wright, um, the, the sidewalks, it's predominantly expanding from the high school out, correct?
From the, so, the way that the sidewalk project runs is all explained north to south. So, it, it is, uh, at the, so, everybody's familiar where the ninety-degree bend on Bach-Buxton is?
Correct.
Uh, by provision living. So, it'll pick up there, and it'll extend south, uh, basically all the way to the intersection of Clough and Bach-Buxton Road. And then, there will be feeder, uh, legs that connect into, uh, I believe, uh, I'm going to get the subdivisions wrong, um, Avalon Gardens, um, Babson, Babson Park, uh, East Gate Oaks gets picked up. I think we actually are extending a leg. Is it to the apartments as well, Matt? There's a small leg that goes to, uh, East Gate. It's in the vicinity of that on, that's on Shaler. And then, there's some legs that are already finished there, but we're connecting to that, and then, we're going to wrap all the way around the corner down to Clough and basically wrap all of that, and then, get to Estrella, which is east. That's like, that's our easternmost subdivision in the whole township. And so, we're going to be making all those connections, and, um, it, yeah, it's a pretty significant project.
That's great. Well, when is that supposed to start?
So, that's, uh, fiscal year twenty-six, which could start anywhere between June of twenty-five, uh, or July of twenty-five to June of twenty-six. That's basically how the state, um, programs those. I think they set it for a fourth quarter potentially. We'll try to advance it depending on when the engineering happens, but, um, so, it could be, it could happen as early as January, probably at twenty-six, but maybe April of twenty-six. So, you're looking at probably, at, at best, a late twenty-five.
Okay.
Bid award, mid-twenty-six bid award.
No problem. And then, just, just for the, when, when does, when's the end of your fireworks? What day is that? Do you know?
September twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Saturday.
That puts you on the spot.
No, September twenty-eighth.
Okay, perfect. And then, uh, um, Mr. Logan, just wanted to compliment you real quick. Um, love the board's idea, uh, at Parks with the, you know, the information boards. So, and then also, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Wright, just for making that happen so quickly, because, uh, it should have been done a long time ago. I didn't think about it until you brought it up. So, nice job. Uh, the AEDs, ballpark, uh, Chief, do you know what those are going to cost? Not to put you on the spot, but any idea what those will cost for?
The, the boxes themselves have already been purchased. Uh, those were twelve hundred apiece?
Okay.
Yeah, twelve, twelve to fifteen hundred apiece for the box itself. Purchase four of those. Uh, we've, we were able to, we're going to get a few, uh, AEDs that we have in the fire department right now. We're going to get back up, uh, serviced. We should be able to use those for the time being, uh, to use in the boxes.
So, twelve, twelve to fifteen hundred? Okay. And I, I'm, I'm good, honestly, and if, even if we, for some reason, needed one or two more, um, I, I don't need a law to tell me that. Like, it's, it's good to have one at the parks. Go and have it at, at public places. So, I'm, I'm okay with that cost. Um, yeah, last thing is, is I feel like we've got a lot of irons in the fire, a lot of different balls rolling right now, and, Mr. Wright, you're, you're, you're a big piece of that puzzle that puts it all together. So, I truly appreciate you. Just know it's not going unnoticed, and, uh, honestly, you, you kind of make me lazy in a sense because I just trust everything is getting done, and it is getting done. So, appreciate you very much. Just wanted to say good to that. So, that's all I got, sir.
Great. Uh, so, Mr. Wright, so, on the basketball courts, so the, the public knows what's going on with that. So, at Klepper, it's just going to be just simply resealing the asphalt and repainting, is that correct?
It's, it's a color coat sealing, like a sport court, very similar to what you see on the pickleball courts. You know, you could just put black, black top over, you know, sealer like we do out here on it.
Brewer coat.
Brewer coat, whatever, but this essentially accomplishes the same thing, and it's a more durable, you know, it's got that grip, that grippy texture. It, you have to seal it, so you might as well make it look nice and get, you know, three to five years' play out of it. So...
And then, at Veterans Park, it's, it's actually milling off the existing blacktop?
No, actually, that, the blacktop itself is in pretty good shape. It's just a huge area. What they'll do is remove the net posts because the net posts are pulling, and then, they'll patch those. And they have a product that they put on. It's, uh, almost like a drywall tape. It looks like, like it would be like you could patch a seam on drywall, and then, they float it with a textured kind of, uh, uh, glue, for lack of a better term. And then, they, they put the surface sealant over top of it. So, they, they level it, and it was really fascinating to watch this process at the pickleball courts at Klepper. Um, you know, they'll, they do leveling. They screed it. They can sand it. They can, uh, uh, they put this tape and stuff down. I mean, it's pretty incredible. Uh, so, they'll do all of that. They'll patch those holes where the net posts were. They'll fill those with the same kind of tape, and then, you'll have this smooth, plain surface. And then, uh, we were able to secure the portable nets, which will preserve the pavement and then prevent that net post pulling issue. Uh, they're portable, and I use that term loosely. You know, if you can lift three hundred pounds, you know, you can take one, but we're going to make, I think, Mr. Taylor and I discussed setting lag anchors just to make sure, you know, that, you know, a crew of ten guys doesn't try to walk off with one in the night, but, um, yeah, that's the process.
Mr. Dills might just throw one over his shoulder and take off.
But, uh, so, you'll get, it's basically the last quarter to a half inch is what is being resurfaced. The asphalt's in pretty good shape there. So, the under, the underlying asphalt's in decent shape. You've got to have some time on that.
Okay. So, so, it's, it's resurfacing, but more extensive at Veterans?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll, you'll get a lot of cracks. All the net posts are being, kind of, they'll be filled and leveled, and then, you'll have a smooth recolored surface coating. And Matt, I think it's going to be green and blue, just like, just like Klepper?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes. Everybody likes that green and blue color combo. They, it pops. You can see it. It's crisp. It looks good.
Very good. Okay, let's move on.
As opposed to your knowledge, how they coat that?
Uh, it's, uh, learn something new every day.
Always of experience.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're going to move on to a public hearing, and, um, it's, it's, uh, Union Township zoning case number one twenty-four Z, and I'd like to, uh, start with a motion to open the hearing.
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Any discussion on opening the hearing? Hearing none. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Public hearing is open.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor?
Mr. Becker, do you want to have Mr. McCormick?
Oh, oh, oh!
Present first.
Okay. Mr. McCormick, would you explain to us? Give us an overview. What's going on with, uh, number one twenty-four Z?
Yes, uh, so, the site is, uh, on Glen Estesville, Glen Estesville Road, five parcels, zone R-one, R-two, and PD to be zoned. Uh, planned development, uh, applicant is the Union Township Claremont County CIC Incorporated. Outline the site here in the slides, just south of the Klepper Lane intersection with Glen Estesville. Uh, you can see the zoning of the subject property and the surrounding properties here. You can see the oblique imagery of what was there prior to some houses being tore down. Uh, the site with the topography, the site with the new, uh, overlay plan, which has flipped the amphitheater per the zoning commission's recommendation from July twenty-fourth. These are the updated, uh, visuals that the applicant has provided for the site, which would include a Bad Tom Smith Brewery, Works Pizza, and I believe a Buy a Golly's, and there are some other, uh, potential tenants there as well, which would be along the line of what's in that area, uh, which is the Ivy Point Mixed Juice Corridor, which is, uh, appropriate for mixed-use developments, including entertainment uses, small-scale retail, restaurant, lodging, convention-type uses, with an eye towards creating synergy among land uses, uh, streetscape, high-quality facade design, pedestrian connectivity, accessibility, and so forth. Uh, we believe this project is very consistent with that, uh, those elements of that corridor and the conference of plan. Here's some site photos that we took looking north towards proposed northern access, towards Klepper. This is looking south from that area. Looking east towards the site, from the site towards Burgoyne, across the street. Looking west across the street, site, uh, south across from Burgoyne, north from proposed southern access, south from proposed southern access. And as far as the staff comments, the zoning commission passed these all along as part of their recommendation to rezone the site to planned development. All of these elements still stand. Uh, the only other item that was part of their motion was to flip the amphitheater, which has been done. Uh, are there any questions for me?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Logan, any questions?
I have no comment.
Mr. Dills?
Good job, Mark. No, no, no comment, no, no questions, sorry.
I, you know, I don't either. I think, uh, I think we, we understand what's going on. Okay, so, if there's no further questions for Mr. McCormick, I'll then open it up to, uh, to the public. If I don't get ahead of myself again. All right, so, anybody from the public, anybody in the audience would like to speak on behalf in favor of this case? Seeing no one. Is there anybody in the audience who is opposed, would like to speak in opposition to this case? How about interested party? Anybody not for it or against it, but just like, like to say something one way or the other? Okay. In that case, let's, uh, I will need a motion in the close of the, the public hearing. Mr. Logan?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion on closing the, the meeting? All right. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed.
Okay, um... Then, we'll start with a motion to approve the zoning case number one twenty-four Z. Mr. Logan, motion there?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Okay, is there any discussion?
Um, I have no comment. Uh, I have abundance of caution. I am abstaining from this vote on this case.
All righty, now, Mr. Dills, would you like to abstain as well?
Actually, Mr. Becker, not to make your life more challenging for you to do this on your own, but I actually have a personal issue with this applicant, and I as well have to abstain from this vote. So, the vote is on you, sir.
I need some legal advice. Mr. Wright, uh, can one vote?
Well, obviously, I, I can't give you legal advice, but you...
Let me reword the question. Mr. Wright, any suggestions how to handle this situation?
Call the roll. That's, that's what I would do, is call the roll.
You're going to talk about it and vote?
Talk about it. You can deliberate. You can ask staff questions. You can ask us questions if you have discussion.
Well, you know, I, I just, you know, tell you my, my, my thoughts or my comments, just in, in general. I'm, I'm excited about the project. Uh, I, I think it's huge for Union Township. You know, it's, uh, this has a lot of potential for, um, uh, you know, additional growth. Uh, I, I think it is, uh, I think somebody who used to work here would say, uh, was it growth, activity breeds activity?
Activity breeds activity.
There you go. Activity breeds activity. Uh, I haven't, um, heard a lot, uh, in the way of downside on, on social media. There was just some comments about traffic and such, but that's going to be a problem until, you know, it's been a problem since the beginning of time. Will be till the end of time. We're, 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 we're dealing with as best we can, keeping up with it all. Uh, no, I, I think it's awesome, and, uh, you know, I, I fully support the project. And now, with that, I guess, since I'm done with board discussion on this, unless there's any other comments from anybody. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Abstain.
Mr. Dills?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Correct.
All right. Very good. Moving on. Uh, any old business that I know of, or new business? There's consent agenda. So, I got three items here. So, Mr. Logan, I would like a motion to approve the minutes from July ninth. Also, the, uh, approval of payments is prepared by Mr. Campbell, as well as the monthly financial report.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under motion agenda, approval of purchase orders. What, uh, Mr. Wright, what do we have that's, uh, exceeding fifteen thousand dollars?
So, I do have a few for you this evening. First is to the United States Postal Service for retail postage. Again, that's retail postage that we purchase to resell. We purchase it and get credit on our sales through our retail post office operation. That is in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. For purchase order to the Union Township Community Improvement Corporation, that is for infrastructure funding in the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That accounts for the, uh, you know, planned improvements of Champion's Way to continue to fund that process, but also includes some contingency funding because we always believe here that you should estimate up and, in case, you know, you run into change orders. Um, the next item, uh, and that's for seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The next item is Claremont County Transportation Improvement District. That is for the Bach-Buxton Sidewalk Engineering Phase One funding township portion in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. The next is to Rumke of Ohio for Fall Junk Days in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that is for our container, I believe, our container and packer trucks, things like that. Uh, Morton Salt Inc. for Highway Rock Salt for, uh, that coincides with the motion item this evening. Again, if we approve a contract or a bid, we have to have a purchase order. That is in the amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars uh, at the stated price of what our allocation is per the motion. Um, and then, the last is to Pinnacle Paving and Ceiling for the Veterans Park Basketball Court Resurfacing in the amount of thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. And, uh, because you asked me about this, about the tennis courts, this is a full pavement rehab. Uh, we have some significant cracks, fissures opening up on that. I can't, Matt, we, when was the last time we? Twenty, twenty-five, twenty years? I mean, I hadn't been done since, I, I mean, either time that I've worked here that I can do it. So, um, it's been quite some time. That'll just be to put the asphalt down and stripe it. Um, before you put the seal coat, you know, that sport court on, we want to let it, uh, let the solvents cook off, you know, that, that petroleum, fresh petroleum product. We want some of those solvents to cook off for a season. Um, you don't want to put that stuff directly on fresh asphalt. So, this will be new pavement and line striping, just like you would do a road. So... And that's ARPA funding, in case anybody's asking.
I thought when we were talking about this before, I thought we were talking about the basketball court. We were talking about the tennis court.
Talking about the tennis court.
Ah-ha.
The basketball court.
Is getting new asphalt.
A full rehab.
Okay, maybe, maybe I'm just spoke when I, when I asked the question.
Yep, sorry.
I think I'm having a lost night tonight. Hey, it happens.
Nah, as I said, that was thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars, and there is a corresponding ARPA resolution, um, to go with that. So...
Okay, very good. Any, uh, any questions to collect?
I have none.
Mr. Dills?
Easy, good to go.
Okay. Uh, I, I don't either. So, in that case, uh, Mr. Logan, I would, uh, like a motion to approve the purchase orders exceeding fifteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second?
All right, hearing no discussion. Uh, Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the list, we have, uh, SWOG four G, whatever the heck that is, two, twenty-twenty-four. Anyway, something about rock salt. Uh, Mr. Taylor, you want to talk about the rock salt?
Um, so, the township belongs to the Southwest Ohio Purchasing for Government. That's what SWAT four G stands for.
Ah, thank you.
Uh, so, the township is a member of the organization that bids out the, the rock salt for, it's a hundred and nine entities that belong to this, and they bid out like two hundred and fifty thousand tons of salt. Um, so, the bids that came in for this year, uh, we actually have an option for a second year, uh, but the bid for this year was, uh, seventy-nine dollars and eighty-four cents for twenty-four hundred tons. So, I was just looking for the board's approval, uh, for this. It's the lowest, most responsive. for this. It's the lowest, most responsive bidder to Morton Salt.
Okay. In that case, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
The, yes, the rock salt contract as described by Mr. Taylor.
Second?
All right, any discussion on rock salt?
We buy a lot of rock salt comparative to these other cities and towns. Rather interesting.
How, how's the pricing compared to prior years?
So it's $11 a ton cheaper this year than last.
Okay.
So it's about $26,000.
So over past, say, three, five years, it kind of trending down or flat, relatively flat?
Um, it's, kind of goes up and down, but it is down for, for right now.
Down is good.
Mr. Taylor, is that a product of having a warm winter?
Supply and demand.
Supply and demand, yeah. Thank you.
I think it means yes to answer your question.
It does. Warm winter. We'll go for another warm winter. Bring the prices down.
I totally agree.
Okay, I think I had a motion and a second on that. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, tell us about the trick or treat hours this year.
So this is an obligatory motion item that we have every year. You know, 2024 Halloween, historically, we have always held Halloween on the 31st, always, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And so I just request a motion for the board to ratify that again this year and we will get that out for everyone on social media. Because aside from when is junk days and the fireworks, the most frequent question and phone call we get in the fall is when is trick or treat? And that, those calls will start sometime at the end of September. So.
Be October 31st?
But we, we've always done it by motion. Yep, always, this is, always the 31st, always 6 to 8:00 PM. But consistent with our past action, we always-
Even if we didn't do this, I would still go out on October 31st.
Well, there is variation. I mean, different communities do-
Different communities do different things, yes.
So this, uh-
Let's put this to the test. I'll see if he goes out on his own. On my own, yes.
Mr. Logue, could I have a motion to approve the Halloween trick or treat schedule as described by Mr. Wright?
So moved.
Second?
Any additional discussion on this topic?
Uh, I'll, I'll entertain a quick comment because I think we're well ahead of schedule and we might have to be here at 8:00 PM anyway, right? Don't have to be here at 8:00 PM anyway. Uh, yeah, a little bit of comment. I'm seeing a lot of police forces out there doing like hide from an officer or something. Can someone tell me a little bit about that? Do you know, do you know what I'm referencing?
I have seen that on social media.
Is it just kind of a new trend or something?
I think that was a brand new trend.
It's like a hide and seek activity? I think they're doing it at the Claremont County Fairgrounds. Is that right?
I haven't seen any neighborhood-
Yeah, Owensville, Owensville, do they have PD, Owensville?
They do.
I think they're doing it at the Claremont County Fairgrounds. Yeah, I saw them advertise it. So I was just looking for some information.
Hide from a cop, is that what it's called?
It's like you play hide and seek with the police or something. Yeah.
John, you should do that.
The last time I did that, it didn't go well.
Oh, dude, do tell.
I was a teenager. I was a punk, you know? 50 years ago.
Be careful now, you are alive.
Enough detail there. All right. I think, Mr. Campbell, roll call, please, before I say anything else.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. And Mr. Wright, tell us about the contract authorization of the, or for the intergovernmental agreement.
So this is the same intergovernmental agreement I referenced earlier. It basically outlines the county's partnership with us and the funding commitments through the TID to pay for numerous engineering components related to the Bach-Buxton Schaler-Clough sidewalk project. And they're also coupling into that roundabout design for a primary roundabout at that 90-degree bend that I talked about, but then also some Schaler improvements there. So I don't know whether they're going to be successful. I think, Matt, did they apply for, I think they applied for funding to OKI for that this year. I'm not sure. I thought Jeremy said they were going to apply again. They weren't successful last year. The magnitude that project require, it's going to require federal funding. Fortunately, we have our federal funding. So their thought is go ahead and get the engineering work done, get our project engineered, keep it out of the way, so that, you know, the worst thing you can do is build a project and then tear it up. So that's why we're trying to coordinate that or whatever. So, so this would authorize that. The TID's already approved it. This is just our authorization and this gives me the authority to sign the agreement, so.
Okay. In that case, Mr. Logue, I would like a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement as described by Mr. Wright.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion on this? All right, seeing no discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Mr. Wright, tell us about the resolution 2024-43.
So, you know, if you recall, we had a disposal, just a generic, a generic disposal ordinance where we did the GovDeals partnership. And actually, I'm really pleased that we did that because that really makes the process much easier. We can run that in-house. We do have to follow a process. Every time we put something on there, we bring a resolution to the board. So, you know, the last time we did it, it was the Fire Blast trailer. This time, there's five different items. Four of them are related to the Police Department. One of them is related to the Service Department. You can see on here notably, we have a 1990 Humvee, a 2016 Ford Police Interceptor Explorer. We have a standard cab Tiger truck, which is like a mini truck, I think. Is that what that is? Mini truck? We have some light bars, which are law enforcement sales only. And then we have a 1999 International Utility that the Service Department's using as sort of their facilities maintenance vehicle. We were actually able to take one of the recently commissioned ambulances and make that the new fleet maintenance vehicle and then we'll get rid of the 99. It's a, is it diesel? It's, yeah, it's, the gas engines are much easier to work, work with and all that. So we have to do a resolution to dispose of that. And then we post, just so you're aware and the public's aware, we have a legal notice section on our website. We post these, we drop these legal notices on. And then we also drop, we'll, we'll put all the notices out and then it goes onto GovDeals and there's a link for every one of them, how to access that. So the public can monitor that from time to time. So if you're interested in government auctions, there's, there's kind of some cool, you know, if the public's interested, there's some cool stuff out there. If anybody wants a 1990 Humvee, so.
Chief, is it the black one we have?
It's tan. No roof. It's, yeah.
You love it.
The black one's cool. I hope I sell that one. Okay.
We got rid of that one as well. Several ones.
Now, that tan one looks good on you.
More money in them than they're probably worth.
Really?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Logue, can I have a motion to adopt resolution 2024-43?
What, I got a question. What does happen if the reserve price is not met on the GovDeal?
So in the resolution, in the resolution, what, we included some language in there that if we do not meet the reserve, it gives me and/or the fiscal officer the ability to lower the reserve.
Okay. I didn't see that point called out. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any additional discussions?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Mr. Wright, tell us about the 2024-44.
This is our ARPA funds authorization. Every time you spend ARPA funds, our financial advisor and legal counsel say we need to declare the ARPA funds. So this is related to the basketball court, the basketball court improvements at Veterans, just basically rehabilitating our physical plant there. It's part of the process. And so just a, really a housekeeping item more than anything. As you can see, the estimate is referenced in Section 1, $30,672, and then the estimate Pinnacle Paving attached as an exhibit to the, or, to the resolution. So, pretty self-explanatory. On a related note, we're down to about, we're going to burn through the rest of our allocation for paving. I think we came in a little bit under budget, but we're going to work on trying to spend the rest of what the allocation was to get some more res- resurfacing. And then we'll be at about 60,000 left. Is that about right? I think based on the last report?
That's correct.
Yep. So we're trying to encumber everything before the 12/31 deadline, so.
Very good. Okay, could I have a motion to approve resolution 2024-44?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion on this? Seeing none? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, tell us about resolution 2024-45.
Yes, sir. So this is just another routine action item that Mr. McCormick's department prepares. This is a nuisance pavement resolution. This is for grass, noxious weeds, vegetation, garbage and debris for three properties, 696 McCormick Lane, 4404 I Colts Road and 4862 Teal Lane, all of which have been subject to numerous notice. The pictures speak for themselves and the properties. Sometimes these are foreclosures. Sometimes they're just delinquent property owners. And this, as I said, this is a specific process prescribed in revised code for 50587 for that specific purpose. There's other ones that the board can do for unsafe buildings or structures or vehicles, different process, different revised code section.
Okay. I would like a, I would like a motion to approve resolution 2024-45.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? My only comment is I, I bought each of these properties and two of them look like they were abandoned. And it's, it's pretty clear, the, the owners, homeowners, property owners are given a lot of opportunity to get a place cleaned up before it gets to this level where we have to then put the hammer down on it. So with that, Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Wright, tell us about resolution 2024-46.
So this is a resolution that the fiscal office brings to us. This is just a compliance measure that we have to take. This is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary. This is basically certifying your existing tax levels that you have. And we do this every year, so.
It's routine.
This is not a, yes, this is not a tax raise. This is, you have to do this every year, so.
All right. We'll trust you.
I, Mr. Campbell, we've done it every year for, since we've been here.
Long as I've been here.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve resolution 2024-46?
This is the motion not to raise taxes.
To certify the rates.
So moved, so moved.
Second?
All right, any discussion on this? Anybody want to raise taxes? I didn't think so.
I have none.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes, on the rates.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You're funny.
That was too close in timing.
All right. Comments from the board members? Mr. Logue, what are your thoughts?
There's so much great stuff going on. It's awesome. But I do, I just want to share last week, gentlemen, here at the Claremont County Library Union Township Branch, there was a big broadband announcement through Ohio Department of Development in partnership with Alta Fiber. Ohio Department of Development's doing a $50 million funding into this project with $80 million of funding coming from Alta Fiber to do infrastructure for delivering broadband to Claremont County, eastern part of Claremont County, Adams County and Browns County. And it's going to basically create the infrastructure that needs to be there that will impact over 38,000 lives. They still will have to pay for access to broadband. But right now, it's one of those things where the turn on investment's not feasible. And so it's really a perspective of creating a rising tide for infrastructure and services. I kind of view it as no different than having a highway or road or infrastructure go through because the residents and the people that are in that part of Claremont County, Adams and Brown, they don't have broadband and internet at their home. They can't start a small business, so they're disconnected from the modern economy. Their kids can't come home from school and get on the internet and do schoolwork and research. And if you're elderly and you can't get out, you can't check in with your doctor and have a tele, telehealth appointment. And so, anyway, I think it's very impactful to connect those people to the modern economy. And what does that mean for Union Township on the western side of Claremont County? One, I think it's great the announcement happened here, but two, it's, to me, it just shows how the gateway for Claremont County, but also Adams and Brown comes through Union Township. And as there's further growth and development, infrastructure dollars and the jobs that are created from those infrastructure dollars being built out there, it's just going to be a benefit to Union Township overall. So just wanted to share that news. We did have our state reps there, Adam Byrd and Gene Schmidt, they, they funded the $50 million that the state got to execute. So credit to the state reps as well for at least having that regional mindset.
All right, sounds good. Mr. Dills?
Just wanted to say thanks. I appreciate everyone accommodating their schedule. The reason why we had our meeting tonight is because I was gone for two weeks for the Air Force for my annual tour. Bittersweet. And, you know, Sunday was the last time I'm going to put on that uniform. I'm, I'm done. I filled my contract and my contract officially ends at the end of this month. And so it was bittersweet, you know? So, but it's, it's time to close that chapter with, you know, my kids are in their prime years and-
Where'd you go?
This time, we're at Charleston Air Force Base, which, very busy. It's right there in a, in a port and-
South Carolina?
Yeah, South Carolina. And so it was really neat. We, we did a lot of work with Haiti and filled up a lot of C-17, C-130s, those are the big cargo planes, of a lot of cargo, a lot of humanitarian stuff, you know, and just a ton of just stuff. Filled, filled these planes up. And it was busy. It was very, it was a very busy Air Force Base. But last, it's kind of, it's bittersweet. It's crazy because they tried hard to keep me in and, and I was actually almost convinced for a second to stay. But, but it's, it was my time. I'm good. I'm done. I feel at peace with it. And so, but it was, it was, it was bittersweet, you know? This weekend was the last weekend to put on a uniform and hang the boots up, so.
How many years were you in?
Total of a span between 14 years. I was in total, but between 14 years, I was about seven, eight years, seven and a half years total. So, but I'm, I'm good. I'm at peace with it. And so it was just bittersweet. And I'll tell you, one, one night, we, we got, we were, we were so, we were in a warehouse and, I mean, down in Charleston, it was so humid. It's so humid. Call me soft, I don't know, but it was blazing hot. And we were in a warehouse all day. And, and then afterwards, we cleaned up, went to this foster care place. And that was really just, we volunteered there till, till dark. And it was just neat and it was challenging also because these kids, you see these kids, teenagers, and they're bad kids. They are. It's not their fault. You know, I mean, they're just, they have no parents, they have bad homes, not loving homes, no discipline. And, and so we were out there and that was really, it was, it was definitely emotional and it was fun at the same time to try and make a difference. But, oh, yeah. So, but I, I just, you know, we're here today because of me and I appreciate all of you accommodating your schedules for that and, and being here for me. So appreciate, appreciate that very much. And I also apologize to you to do that lone vote and, but you did a great job. You're so proud of you. But that's all I got. Great summer. It was a fantastic summer for Union Township. I feel like your communication has just been phenomenal. The concerts were great, with a lot of good events, the fishing tournament, the pickleball tournament, and just a lot of good things going for UT. And hopefully, before this time next year, that overpass will be done. And, and, I mean, I believe at that point, will all the roads be smooth and good to go? Mr. Taylor, is that right? For crying out loud?
Well.
Never mind. I'm going to retract my question if I can. So, but you don't think it'll be done this time next year?
Talking about maybe the end of '25.
You're lying to me.
No, I'm not. Unfortunately, I'm not-
Did that ODOT guy not come in here and say spring of, of next year, it'll be done?
Not '25 and spring of '26 potentially.
On my life, I swear you said that.
Spring of '26 potentially. I just gave resin. That answers my night.
It's great. It's made my night. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I think sometime in '25 it's supposed to be open for traffic, but the project completed actually in '27, so my understanding.
That's what I really care about. Just open so we can get, get by.
'25, sometime in '25.
All right.
You'll be able to take your Hummer, your new Hummer, you know, that you're going to auction.
I'm going to, I'm going to buy one. Yeah, yeah. So appreciate everyone, everyone accommodating their schedules for me. Appreciate it very much, so.
Well, thank you for your years of service to, to our country. You know, I've, I've never worn the uniform and I really appreciate both you guys and, and, you know, Mel and others who, who have, who have, who have served.
Yeah, I'll tell you, my, my unit deploys next year and this position is one of the men. I could have done a, a short-term extension. I could have done a two-year extension, but you're gone for six months when you deploy. And, you know, not to get politics- but you're gone for six months when you deploy, and, you know, not to get politics involved, but the, 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 uh, the deployment is right in the middle of November, and I would not be able to be here to run for trustee again if I chose to, to, to stay in for another two years, 'cause I would ha- I would have to deploy next year for six months. And so that was, that, I would be lying if I said that that was not one of the factors in my decision-making.
Well, that is bad timing, though. I tell you, you're, you're, you'll never regret the time you spent with your kids, your only young ones.
Yeah, Gunner had his first football game, uh, tackle football game last week, and I completely missed it, you know, and Sailor had her first soccer game this season, and obviously missed it, wasn't there, so, I mean, it's okay, life goes on, but the very, his very first real tackle football game, and obviously dad couldn't be there, so that's kind of a bummer, but, um, it's okay. No worries. So that's, that's what I signed up for, but, yeah, appreciate you, sir.
All right, there we go.
Uh, if I may.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you for, for your years of service there. As you know, honor and pleasure to be able to do that. So I was just going to say congratulations on that, but I guess I first want to say, I want to say congratulations. I feel like you just, uh, uh, made a, a reelection announcement, uh, so.
No, that's not what I was doing.
Hold you to that.
Nothing, that's not what I was doing up here.
Hold you to that. Uh, uh, so, um, but, um, but no, seriously, in all seriousness, I mean, that's, that's, I totally understand that's completely bittersweet.
It was.
I mean, it's closing a chapter that's, yeah, that's difficult and tough. Um, you know, and at the, and you, and you feel that connectedness with your unit and loyalty with your unit, which is, is kind of a bummer. You're going to miss that camaraderie.
Yeah.
Um, and at the same rate, your unit, though, I mean, I gosh, I, I just, I can't, I can't fathom, though, the disappointment that the senior leadership must have, losing you, 'cause it's going to hurt their combat effectiveness for how quick they can load those planes and get them up in the air. They're not going to have you to just throw a pallet on your back and carry it on to the back of the plane.
Ridiculous.
But it, it is a great compliment as far as that goes. I mean, seriously, they're, they're going to miss you. They're going to miss you a hundred percent, so.
I, I was humbled. I mean, the, the chief and, and our commander, he's a major, both pulled me aside and, you know, what, what would it take kind of thing, and, uh, I was humbled by it. But I'll tell you, you know, y- y- you know how, like, there, there, there's only one color in, in, in the military. We all wear, you know, the same color uniform, and, and it's just like, you see out here in the, the world, obviously, the news stirs it up, but there's like, in my, in my experience, and I can only say this from my eyes, there's like no racism, no sexism. You don't see it at all. It doesn't exist, you know? It's like we all pick on each other and give each other a hard time, but at the end of the day, we have each other's back, and it just, it's just all the same uniforms. It's a beautiful, awesome experience that unfortunately, in the civilian world, you don't get to experience the same thing, so. Um, but, yeah, yeah, appreciate you saying that. Thank you, Mr. Lo, so. Yeah, thank you.
And you're, no, you, and you're spot on. I mean, that's, and that's the thing, that, that's the camaraderie of, of working together, having a common mission and working together. It doesn't matter what anyone's background is.
Yeah.
And you, you have that across the board. Um, Marine Corps is always light green, dark green, you know, it doesn't matter. Uh, everyone bleeds on the inside, and it's the same, so.
Yeah.
There's some, something really unique about, uh, having a challenge, a reason, you know, um, a very, uh, challenging goal in front of you that can be reasonably achievable if you do all these, uh, things that push you to the limit, uh, but that's what it's about. You'll miss that. You'll miss that, and, uh, unseriousness, the Air Force definitely is going to miss you, I'm sure of that.
Thank you.
So, that's, that's a, bittersweet, but it is one of those chapters to close.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, my turn. So my, you know, my only thoughts were, there seems to be this long and growing list of successes here in Union Township, which is certainly a team effort up here. And, uh, you know, I especially really appreciate Cory bringing so much of this together. Um, but, you know, we, and I just kind of made a quick list here. You know, we, we got the reaccreditation out the Fire Department, um, Police Night Out, big success, pickleball tournament, the new, new courts and such, uh, concerts were the most crowded I've ever seen them. Uh, movie nights, um, I think we had one so far this year, which was very well-attended. Um, Farmer's Market, uh, you know, it's been a success as well, and, you know, the list goes on. So, uh, you know, this is good stuff, and we certainly, uh, you know, hope it will, uh, continue, and I'm confident that it will. Okay, and with that, we have a, a list of upcoming events. I've got eleven of these this time, and then we're going to adjourn until the eight o'clock, uh, C I C meeting. So upcoming events. Boarding Zoning Appeals will meet on Thursday, September fifth at seven P M. There's no zoning commission meeting in August. Board of Trustees' next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September tenth at six P M. Parks and Recreation Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, September twelfth, five P M. at the Civic Center. Fire Department will be hosting a Fire Prevention Week Open House on, oh, October the sixth, from eleven to one, at Station Fifty-One, and that's the water tower. Number six of eleven, with the exception of Labor Day weekend, the Farmer's Market will take place each Friday through September the twentieth, from four to seven. We are accepting applications for persons interested in serving as a Parks Ambassador. Learn more about that going to their website. It's, uh, U T Claremont dot gov, and, uh, click on the community tab, and then you'll see, um, the Parks Ambassador program on there. Or contact Lisa R. via email at L A H R at U T Claremont dot gov for additional information. The Township offices will be closed on Monday, September second, in observance of Labor Day. Township will host another movie night at the park on, uh, Saturday, September the fourteenth. The movie is Elemental, and that starts at, um.
Nine-ish.
It's nine, I, I hit two different times. Let's just call it dusk.
Dusk.
How about dusk? Whenever that is, that's when the movie will start, roughly. And that's, that's going to be at the Veterans Memorial Park. Number ten, Mount Mariah Cemetery will host the annual Lantern Lighting Event. That will be, uh, Saturday, September the twenty-first, from five to seven thirty P M. And finally, the Union Township End of Summer Celebration Fireworks will occur on Saturday, September the twenty-eighth. For